Yeah, so much for their firework code, you know, from from New Year's. My house, I live by Lake Louise and it was just.
Over that way.
Yeah.
Armageddon going on there. It was a lot.
And someone, I mean, spend some serious.
Yeah.
I know, so. Economic, I don't know. He's with Pierce County, Pierce County.
Yeah, and there were heat lines going up.
Yeah. It was supposed to be from eleven to one, eleven, you know, P M till one A M on New Year's Eve. You know, they started at, I think Australia.
Yeah.
Eleven.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Going. But we'll see, I, you know, it's gonna be so hard, please, they can't be able to go out.
Mr. Chair, we're now live on YouTube, just so you know.
Yeah, it was a, it was a long show. But you didn't hear any? Wow.
Yeah, I, I do.
Yeah. You couldn't verify.
Ready when you are, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great, we'll get, we will get started. I call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order this January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, we have number two on our agenda right away. Before roll call, we have the elections of chairs and vice chairs. Um, before we do that, I do want to mention, um, four, um, council members. This is their last year of, uh, two thousand twenty-three, uh, twelve of twenty-three, so, um, twelve months from now. Um, the expiring council members are Wagaman, Parsons, Pearson's and Daniels. So just for future reference, um, before we go through this process. Um, so the process is tonight, we will be electing new chairs for, uh, the Planning Commission moving forward. We'll start with the vice chair and if we have any nominations for vice chair, um, from the fellow commissioners.
You can nominate yourself?
Yep, you can nominate yourself, Mr. Ryan Pearson.
Yep, I'll nominate myself.
Okay, Mr. Pearson, we appreciate it. We have any other nominations? No? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pearson. And so at this time, we will, uh, take a vote for Mr. Pearson, Ryan Pearson, to be vice chair for the upcoming two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission. All those in favor by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing, seeing, no o- oppositions? Uh, congratulations, Mr. Pearson. Okay, we'll move to the chair. And the chair is, um, also, um, for two thousand twenty-three. We looking for any nominations for the chair position? Mr. Pearson?
I would like to nominate Mr. Daniels.
I appreciate that and thank you. Any other nominations? Thanks for all of you raising your hand. Um, I appreciate that. So at this time, at this time, uh, we'll take a vote. Uh, we have a nomination for Mr. Daniels to continue as the, uh, chair of the Planning Commission for two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels, uh, is duly elected again, um, to the two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission as the chair. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, congrats, right. Okay, could staff call roll, please?
Don Daniels.
Here.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wagaman.
Present.
Philip Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson.
Here.
Brian Parsons.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you so much. So before us, uh, we have the minutes of December seventh, two thousand twenty-two. I don't know, we've never received those in emails or anything, so I don't know what the minutes.
They were on our.
No, they're not.
They, they came to my little computer.
Hmm, well, yeah, I didn't get it, okay.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like to wait till the next meeting to approve minutes, you can.
Okay, yeah, because, uh, the minutes never came via email or to my tablet of underneath content of minutes for December second. So we'll move to, um, extend that till the next meeting for those approvals.
On Reddit, I'm prepared for next.
Yes, you are, thank you. Well, good, you admitted you read it, so that's good. Um, so, uh, we have, uh, any agenda changes?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, tonight, uh, we'll open up public comment. Um, anyone wishing to speak to fellow commissioners, um, at this time is, uh, willing. And I see no one in the audience tonight, but do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chair, we don't.
We have nobody online, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment. We have no public hearing tonight, no one finished business, we move right to number nine. Review of the Planning Commission two thousand twenty-three work plan. Ms. Tiffany Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is included in your packet, which unfortunately you did just receive today. If the planning commissions aren't already aware, uh, the city's systems were hacked over Christmas. And so literally today, we're basically getting back up and running, so our apologies once more. But in any event, on page five, and I'm sharing it here, is the work plan as proposed for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, we have the same members and now we have the same chair and vice chair as last year. Council liaison, I'm not sure if the council has taken action or not. As you know, last year it was council member Bokey. You know, were you reelected? Okay, so no action taken yet to set the liaisons up yet. So more to come there. Uh, we'll continue to meet on the first and third Wednesdays. And if there are, uh, a need for it, there may be special meetings, as happened last year. I don't foresee that as of right now, but take that with a grain of salt.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the work plan itself starts on this table and you'll see, we tried to do it somewhat chronologically. So if you follow the X's across in the columns, the, um, initial items are the ones that start at the beginning of the year and others later in the list start later in the year. Uh, Planning Commission work plan we're doing right now, reviewing the goals, the housing action plan, the multi-county tax exemption program, shoreline program, and implementation of the tree code. All our first quarter or first and second. We'll be working, as you're familiar with, with the annual comprehensive plan amendment docket. I anticipate starting to bring that to you toward the end of the first quarter and then to move through your public hearing process in action. The two thousand twenty-four comp plan process, as we've been doing since last September, we're gonna just basically have that in some form in front of you every meeting. Um, and it will, in more or less of the agenda each time, just to try to move things through because it's two years, but that's really not that long when you look at what we have to do. The six-year transportation improvement program, second quarter, the urban forestry program. Uh, I'm happy to report that just today, we got confirmation from U Dub Evans School of the group of students that will be working with the city to help develop their urban street, urban forestry program. So we'll bring that to you second and third quarter of this year. The city council did adopt the three-year work plan, uh, for the climate change chapter as well. And so we will start to bring you status updates on that in second quarter and just do that on a periodic basis. Then we'll be looking at private applications for, in addition to all the other stuff we're doing in two thousand twenty-four. And there's the, uh, recommendations on annual development code changes as well. So those are the biggies for this year. There's quite a bit of items that take more than one or two meetings and a lot of stuff will overlap into next year, but, um, there will be, I think, a lot of media issues for you all to be talking about in two thousand twenty-three. So if you have any other questions, happy to answer them for you.
Um, seeing or hearing none at this time, I thank you for the presentation. And we can, um, then move to the next thing on the agenda?
Thank you. And I should say as well, Mr. Chair, now that we know you are Mr. Chair this year, um, the city council will be taking up the commission's work plans and I will send you an email confirming which night that they would ask you to be there for that if they would like that. Thank you. So the next item is our continuation of the discussion of the two thousand twenty-four periodic review. I'm just gonna do a brief introduction and then we have two guest speakers for you tonight. Um, it's economic development is tonight's focus. And if you'll recall, the general overall, um, uh, thought process behind the periodic review is that every part of the comprehensive plan needs to be looked at. It may or may not need updating, but it needs to be reviewed. Economic development is one of those where there may be some technical things, like for instance, the two thousand twenty census data we need to incorporate versus older data. Or there's, um, some progress that's been made with a particular piece of property that was discussed. Those types of updates, we're not anticipating any huge policy changes, uh, but we will make the effort to go through it and make sure it is consistent with both state law and then regional and countywide policy. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jason Thibodeau. He is, uh, on your screen this evening. He's with the Puget Sound Regional Council. And Jason, you should be able to share your screen.
Let's see. Okay, you got it. You're there. Okay. Do you see slides how they're supposed to be shown?
Yes.
We're seeing them in note form, not presentation form.
They're in note form? All right.
Yeah, or you can see the future slides. Not a big deal.
All right, well, that's, this is always, you never know what you're gonna get on these things, so let's stick with it, uh, cuz it, i- it seems to be working enough. So, uh, thanks for having me, Jason Thibodeau. I'm the program manager for economic development at, uh, the Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, and I'm gonna provide an overview of the economic development element of the comp plan. Um, I, it sounds like you've had other folks from P S R C maybe that have come and talked about, uh, the comp plan updates in more broad terms, so I won't go through. You know what a comp plan is, you know when you need to update it, that's a really good start. Um, you know, I'm assuming what Vision two thousand fifty is, is our plan for regional growth. It contains a bunch of multi-county planning policies that you'll be looking to be in alignment with i- i- in addition to, uh, state requirements for your comp plan, comp plans, as well as a regional growth strategy, which just helps us, uh, determine how growth is gonna be managed throughout the region. So focusing in on economic development, Vision has an economic, uh, development or an economy goal that we as a region have a prospering and sustainable regional economy by supporting businesses and job creation, investing in all people and their health, sustaining environmental quality and creating great central places, diverse communities and high quality of life. And that's kind of a summer summary of the set of M P Ps or multi-county planning policies that exist in Vision. Um, and so, I, you know, again, maybe covering stuff that you already know. When we went to put together some guidance around the economic development element, we went to the, uh, plan review man- manual, this is what staff is gonna be using to review and comment on comp plans. It's basically a checklist of those policy areas from Vision translated down and distilled down. Uh, i- it includes seven areas around the economy section, seven areas of economic development. And I know this is a, a bit of an eye test, but it was just to demonstrate that we just pulled from there and we developed an ec- ec- economic development element guide. So we took those seven areas of focus that were in the M P Ps, that were in the, uh, the plan review manual. Um, and we translated that into a guide to help you put together your economic development element, your economy element. And those seven areas are identifying industries to grow, recruiting, retaining and expanding businesses in your community, expanding access to opportunity, mitigating displacement of businesses, expanding availability of jobs for the residents in your community, promoting responsible business practices and leveraging local cultural assets in your economic development goals and your policies. So, the, I'm gonna cover each of those, uh, right now, uh, at a high level. Um, each, the, in the element guide, for each of those seven areas, we provide a broader context on what those, on those regional policies, some policy considerations, some things to think about and look at when you are thinking about developing these policies. Good example, local policies, if we found some good, um, policies from existing comprehensive plans, we put them in for illustrative purposes. And a bunch of useful data, I'm not gonna get all into, given our time, not all into the various data sources that you can look at, uh, to, to analyze and, and help inform the conversations you're having in your community and your policies. But there's a lot more information that's available in the economic development element guide. So, uh, starting at the top, the, the first policy objective envisioned is to identify and enhance industry clusters, including those recognized in the regional economic strategy that provide goods and services for export. The economic strategy really focuses on those export industries. Those are the industries that pull money into the region, they really help sustain and grow, uh, our, our communities and our regional economy. Um, and, and tapping into these can really help, um, grow local supply chains, really build those, uh, local economies, bring those jobs that have higher wages, uh, into your community and into the region. So, some things to consider, a- and I'll, I'll just say this too, so I got, I got the agenda today and got a chance to look through it and all of your existing, it looks like all of your existing economy policies are in there, so I had an opportunity to review that. Um, the, the really good sets of policies, especially from an economic development perspective, really give you a good idea about what's in the community, how they picture themselves and, and where they're looking to invest and how they fit in the broader picture. And I saw a lot of that, I, I didn't have a chance to do a full inventory, but I saw a lot of that in the policies, uh, that were, that were part of the agenda. So, you know, identifying in these policies, do you have critical industrial areas or airports that you wanna reference and take advantage of? Um, what industries are there? Uh, what supply chains do you have, uh, in your local community or in the broader community that you can tap into? Are there important partners like trade organizations or other economic development institutions or organizations that you partner with to help, uh, translate your policies into action and to help meet your goals? And then, of course, you know, are there other policies that you can, other economic development plans that you can look at to help inform? So we've got a regional economic strategy, you've got county-level economic development strategies. They can help you identify where efforts are gonna be focused. And then at the local level, you know, looking to leverage the work that other folks are doing, uh, to help, uh, grow your local economy and set goals. Um, moving on to the next one, recruiting, retaining and expanding businesses. So Vision calls for focusing retention and recruitment efforts and activities to foster a positive business climate and diversify your employment opportunities. And there's a whole bunch of things that they specifically call out as far as considerations for that. Vision calls for the support of local businesses, women and minority-owned businesses, startup companies, recognizing that these are important economic assets. So the, you know, some of that consideration should be carried down into your local economic development plans. Uh, Vision also calls for increased attention to retaining and expanding environmentally sustainable industries, technologies and services. There's a lot of effort at the state level, uh, and down at the regional and local level to grow these industries. So it's, again, it kind of aligns with our broader vision for our economy in the region, while also providing, uh, opportunities to sort of row in the same direction for, uh, where the, uh, economic development, uh, focus areas are. As well as targeting living wage jobs for growth, you know, we want jobs in our communities. We focus and target on the better-paying, higher-skilled, you know, family wage jobs that, that, that really help sustain that local community. So, uh, some local considerations to think about, uh, recruitment and retention activities. Um, you know, limited resource in, in the outreach that can be done. Communities do that on their own, communities also partner with other organizations. You get the E D B Tacoma Pierce County that does some of that external recruitment work, retention and expansion efforts. The State Department of Commerce does that as well. So there's some partnership abilities when you're, um, establishing your plans uh, and also implementing them over the, uh, over the period of time, uh, in between your updates as well. Um, aligning efforts with other economic development goals that you have. So if you've got economic development goals around sustainability or expanding women-owned businesses, then those can help inform your recruitment and retention activities. And, uh, many communities look to brand and market their communities as well. And those can, those are ways that you can align your policies to other things that are happening. You know, do recruitment that match with your marketing materials that help meet some of your other goals. Moving on from there, we've got, eh, promoting strategies and policies that expand access to opportunity and remove barriers for economically disconnected communities. So Vision calls for local plans to expand access to opportunity and advance racial equity through economic policies. Of course, economic opportunity in your community plays a significant role in life outcomes, uh, and your quality of life in your communities. So looking to address some of those inequities that you may have in, in, in your community. And, and this is a really good opportunity to, um, have conversations with your business community, your local community about what they want the local economy to look like and then help work to develop the goals and policies to help meet that. And some local considerations, you know, education policies, establishing education policies that align with your economic development goals. Educational pa- pathways and, and pipelines is a key, a input and a key success factor in how people do in their economic lives. Um, you can, if you're, you know, you're home to some post-secondary training opportunities, uh, i- in your community. And so connecting some targeted communities to those, um, educational and training programs can be a way that you can help meet your local, um, economic development and, eh, opportunity expansion goals that you have. Of course, focusing infrastructure investments on areas in your community that are in the most need, whether they be transportation investments, other types of, you know, core infrastructure that you can help develop. And then, you know, and finally, uh, building, being intentional on how you're spending public funds. Lot of communities, you know, consider having policies around contracting, whether they have goals that are tied to those contracting, whether they be, you know, uh, within their communities, targeted, um, zip codes, et cetera. Vision also has a policy objective to address, prevent potential physical, economic and cultural displacement of existing businesses that may result from redevelopment and market pressure. We have a housing shortage, we have housing challenges in our community and in our region. And this is having an impact, not just on housing, but also on our commercial displaced, uh, commercial spaces, redevelopment pressures, where housing is sort of oftentimes sort of the first thing in at the loss sometimes of local businesses that are in older spaces, like, you know, lower density spaces. So, you know, recognizing that the rising land values can have a negative impact on the business community that you have. Um, so what are some policies, you know, so what's actually happening in your community? Who is that impacting and what are the ways that you can look to help mitigate that? Whether it's, again, identifying partnerships, identifying spaces that could be repurposed. Um, or, you know, working with those local businesses that, you know, maybe need some facade improvements to help them stay in a, in a changing market and changing environment. Or businesses that may need to locate, is there a way that you can reach out, do technical assistance? You know, maybe partner with your local economic development board to help, um, move them to a more appropriate space if the space that they have been in maybe isn't working for them anymore. And then, of course, packaging those needs up with broader outreach, technical assistance and education efforts to your businesses. Talking with your businesses, figuring out the things that they need specifically, figuring out ways to provide those, uh, to meet those needs either directly or through partnerships with other organizations that are focused on economic development. Uh, the, uh, the next policy objective is to develop a range of employment opportunities to create a closer balance between jobs and housing. We all know the benefits of being able to live and work, uh, in relative proximity to each other. Um, the, the minimizing the impact on our transportation system, the amount of time and money that we save that we can invest in our communities and our families and, in our, in our, in our private lives. You're, you're gonna have goals in your housing element to address your housing needs. From the economic policy side, you know, it kinda, there's an opportunity to flip it on its head. Right now, in the past couple of years, we've experienced a, a, a shift in how people work. So people used to live in one place and work in another place. Um, and now people live and work in their home and they may also work sometimes in other places. You've got, we've got more workers i- in their home bases. And there's a, there's a challenge in, in the data and knowing what that is. But, you know, building more housing for the people that work in your community is one way to kind of help balance this offset, uh, this discrepancy, but also identifying who your, who the workers are that live in your community and targeting your expansion efforts to help meet those needs. Bringing employment centers and spaces closer to where people live, uh, can be really beneficial. In balancing those, those, you know, um, the jobs, housing imbalance that we have throughout the region. Uh, the next policy objective is promote environmental and socially responsible business practices, especially those addressing climate change, resilience and improved health out- outcomes. So this is another element that's really called out in Vision. Um, you know, protecting the natural environment, it's a unique asset that we have. People like living in the region, there's a lot of natural beauty that they, that they come here for and they wanna stay here for. We can, we can build on those goals and, and build out the economic goods and services that help address climate change, both in our local and regional economy, but also being able to, we're really good at doing things, building things, being, uh, developing expertise for things that we can sell uh, and benefit, uh, you know, global markets as well. So, you know, how can we, uh, be at the forefront of some of this? And again, this is, there's a lot of impetus and effort, uh, that's happening at the State Department of Commerce, Washington Maritime Blue. There's lots of clean technology initiatives that, um, the state is looking to grow in the region. And again, another opportunity for, um, kind of local communities to try and tap into that. And then finally, the seventh one is leveraging cultural assets. So supporting, recognizing and empowering the contributions of the regions culturally and ethnically diverse communities, institution and native tribes. So, doing outreach to your communities to help inform your policies and the economy section and other places, identifying, uh, the communities that you have, how do you support them? How do you tap into those resources? How do you support cultural events, you know, or look to fund arts and cultural institutions as a way to sort of build out the, the holistic package of your, what you have to offer in your community? Um, again, there's a lot more opportunities that's kind of smaller communities are seeing where they have more workers on a regular basis at home, uh, more opportunities for them to, you know, go out to lunch, go out to dinner, spending more time, more money, you know, what are the assets and the, and, and the resources that those folks are looking to take advantage of? In their, in their new part-time or full-time home offices. So that was a quick blow-through of all of the, the seven policy areas. And again, there's a lot of data resources that you can look to, um, if you wanna dig into some of those. One of my favorite tools is a, a census tools called on the map that, that you can isolate a community, you can see what people live in the community, you can see where they work. You can look at the commuting patterns, you can get a good sense of, okay, here are the number of jobs and the type of jobs in our communities, but here are the number of workers that we have in our communities, regardless of where they may work in the region. And how can the hu- that help inform both our housing goals, our economic development goals, our business recruitment and retention efforts? So this is a, a mini presentation. We have a larger series, it's called Passport to Two Thousand Forty-four. Back in September, I did a, a longer and more broad session and lasted about an hour and a half and went into a little more detail in these policy areas, as well as a bunch more detail and a lot of the data resources that are available to help inform some of these policy considerations. Uh, but on our P S R C's web pay, web, website, uh, we have a, we have a page of planning resources that Vision two thousand fifty Plan Review Manual, which I referenced, is available there. So you can see exactly what the plan reviewers will be looking for in the economy section and others. Uh, there's a link here as well to the Economic Development Element Guide, which takes this presentation and just goes a little bit deeper, kind of walks through some of the more policy considerations. Again, uh, more, more data examples, policy examples. And then Regional Economic Strategy is a really great resource to see from a regional perspective. What are our industries, what are our challenges, what are our goals, what are people working on? What are our industries, what are our challenges, what are our goals, what are people working on already? Uh, to help identify ways that you can think about aligning some of your policies and goals at the at the local level uh to some of these broader uh regional efforts. So I I'd love to open it up to conversations and questions, so, you know, I'm I'm in the economic development world here at PSRC, uh, I helped to develop our economic strategy, uh, help facilitate the update of the econ policies and vision uh a- as well as putting together the Economic Development Element Guide. Um, Liz Underwood-Boltman is is probably the best resource for general vision questions, general comprehensive plan questions, more detail about kind of review process and stuff like that. Um, but with that, I I'll I'll just pause here and then we can open it up to questions, comments, or kind of to-dos and next steps.
Okay, great, thank you so much for the presentation. Mr. Wagaman has a comments or questions, so go ahead, Mr. Wagaman.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Um. My my first one is, is there's been some communications about uh putting in a regional airport in Pierce County. Um. That I can certainly can see how that can bring some more jobs and some things to our community, but I, from an aviation point of view, it may not be the smartest thing to put an airport here, unless we're considering doing a joint use with our military. So any thoughts on that?
There's a lot, there's a, there's a lot of feelings about that, I think. Uh, so thoughts on that? So, um, just uh some background on some work that we've done at PSRC. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, I believe, uh, the FAA reached out to us to ask us to do kind of a, uh, what we called a baseline study. They were, they do a broad projection of aviation activity across the US. And then, once they have that overall forecast, then they start funneling it down into the in into the subregions, right? And so for us in our region, that's one airport, it has been, it's been C-TAC. And so they're looking out thirty years at the amount of demand that we're gonna have in the region, and they're looking at our very, very small footprint airport at C-TAC, and they say, well, some, this isn't gonna fit, you know? So they asked us to take a look at, you know, validating that forecast from a a regional level, uh, as well as looking across all of the airports that we have and identifying, is there a capacity that exists in our current system? You know, one good example of that is Payne Field. It's a big facility, there hasn't been commercial service up there, they've added some, we're doing a master plan update, there's likely more uh more coming. Well, through our work, we identified that, looking out, there's gonna be twice as much demand as capacity um thirty years from now. And so that was our work, we didn't, we didn't look to identify where an airport could be or should be cited. Um, you know, there's the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission that we were invited, we're invited to participate on uh from a non-voting, on a non-voting basis because of our data background and the work that we did with the FAA. Unsurprisingly, um, a lot of the preliminary work that was done for the commission doesn't get a lot of attention, doesn't get a lot of headlines, when you start to draw circles on maps, people start to really pay attention, especially if that circle is near where they live. Um, so it's been, it's been an interesting process, we've, you not, you you won't be surprised. All of us on the commission and the staff at Wash Darn have heard a lot from folks in Pierce County, folks in Thurston County about what they see, i- i- and they, they expect the impacts of that activity uh would be. There's a process between now and June of next year for the commission, the commission is tasked to make a recommendation on where a new airport should be. Uh, that's still the plan for the commission, we're meeting again in March, and I think there's gonna be a longer conversation about kind of where communities are and what the next steps are. I know there's gonna be other legislation coming to maybe push that timeline out. So, yes, there's a, there's a lot going on, we are not advocating for a specific solution that part of our role being at the table, we're not gonna say that, hey, Pierce County, you know, you need to find a spot for an airport, um, though the commission is tasked with providing a recommendation to the legislature. So I'm not sure where to go with the, with this, with this common aggression, we can acknowledge that, yeah, an a- an airport is uh an economic asset, there's a lot of economic activity that's associated with that. Um, there's not a, there's not an easy place to put it in the region. You're either where you, where we have in- infrastructure, we also have a lot of density and a lot of stuff already there, and where we don't have infrastructure is where the space is, and that has its whole new set of challenges that are gonna come along with that, too.
Great. Well, I appreciate that answer, uh, you you know, having come from the aviation community myself, I I'm just trying to look and say, hey, what what makes sense from that perspective? And and we've got Boeing Field and C-TAC kind of right on top of each other, which is kind of our hub and where everybody's drawn to, and then they open up Payne Field, which is on the north end of the sound. Um, so to me, the 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 thing that makes sense is to maybe think of more of Olympia, you know, Olympia Airport, they got three runways there, power not real long. Uh, so that's an issue, but there's an airport there, and that that would put, you know, Payne the the in the center of C-TAC Boeing, and then down there, and then with the tilt rotor industry um uh really starting to pick up, we we start using those kinds of vehicles to move people to those those hubs, because as you know, when you start looking to do something in Pierce County, we've already fought this battle with roads, you know, how do you get out into the um to the east of uh of Lakewood here? Um, you know, you you put a runway out there, then what do we do roadwise? So it it has a big impact on our whole economy as I see it. So anyhow, those were my thoughts.
So one, one, I'll I'll add one more thing, cause it comes up at time, and you mentioned that it's sort of a joint, you know, the idea of a joint use at JBLM. Um, that comes up as an idea sort of, sort of broadly, hey, what 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 could some potential options be? And in other places in in the US, there are some joint use facilities where got military and commercial activities that live side by side. Um, that is Ben, for the most part, a a a non-starter here in our region, though it does come up even by members of the of the commission. Um, and I get questions, well, I heard that the commission might be recommending joint use, or even in like extreme situations, you know, the like, a crazy idea of moving JBLM and then using that, you know, the existing facility as an airport. That's not on the table, and it's not gonna be anything that the commission is going to um touch or make a recommendation for, though, you know, it is an idea that will keep popping up that I hear about a lot, but that's never come up in our work on the, at the commission, that was eliminated, a a joint use, just the challenges around it. There's not enough demand and support from bases, Department of Defense, our federal delegation to to pursue that as an option, so that hasn't really been on the table, and I just wanna take the opportunity to say that you might hear about it, you might hear about it associated with the work of the commission, uh, but that that's not, it's not really anything that is realistically on the table.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can agree with that, because you got a single runway. Does that make a lot of sense? And really, you need to have two runways in case you have a problem on one, or, you know, some kind of mishap, e- e- to keep traffic moving. And certainly, if you do a joint use, Savannah, Georgia is a joint use field, you know, flown out of there. Uh, the the one thing that makes sense here is they're moving primarily heavies, you don't have a lot of fighter aircraft coming into McCord, so it's similar type aircraft uh working, so that from my perspective makes more sense, but I I just think it's the wrong location, it's it's too close to C-TAC. You know, I think moving a little further south or out makes, from my perspective, makes more sense. My next question, um, you know, you talked a lot about education. And, you know, since I sit on a school board and and look at this thing, one of the things we're not doing well is training our young people to work in the trades, and and I think we need to do some more areas, you know, we've got rules that we can't do certain things, cause well, they can't be apprentice until they're eighteen, uh, that to me is an absurd rule. Um, so we we, I think those are some things that uh we need to talk about, we also need to talk about our educators, training people to do things that make them productive early. Um, I know some things we've done, we've, we started training people in the medical field to be um, when they graduate from high school, they have their uh uh CNA sort of certificate, so they can start working right in the medical field as soon as they leave high school, so that's, that's a positive thing, but I think um your planning commissions or people that are making plans need to work with our educators and think through some of those things. Not, that's not much of a question, but uh, you know, but you did have it up on your slide, so I I'm I'm glad that you're talking down those kind of lines. And and maybe you should talk to some of the local school districts, certainly, um, the people out in Bethel, where we got the Pierce County, um. To, I'm spacing.
Skill Center.
The what now?
Skill Center.
Skill Center, yes, thanks, Lynn. The 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 Skill Center is uh you know, fits right up the alley of what you're, you you shared with us this evening, Jason.
Yeah.
Um, then the the other thing that's interesting to me, uh, my oldest son's still active duty, uh, and he was just telling me that going into his next assignment looks to be down in Nellis or Las Vegas. He was telling me that uh the cost of housing for military now, it's it's almost two thousand dollars over basic allowance for housing. Uh. If, and one of our largest employers here is our military facility, so keeping housing in where it makes sense, so that we can get those people here working uh um and putting demands on our community for resources, and so I think that's a thing that you know, that we need to continue to push. I mean, we we don't want to do anything that would cause our military bases to suffer from a BRAC decision, and at least from my perspective, and uh and since one of their, one of the largest employers in our area, we ought to be doing things to make them grow if they can, if we can, so. That's my thoughts, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you know, a a common theme right in a challenge uh dealing with economic development goals and planning at the local level is that some of the challenges that you're dealing with are broad and regional challenges, like having to, you know, there's only so much you can do to address a regional how to housing shortage, there's only so much you can do to address, you know, pipelines for education systems at community technical colleges for your universities or apprenticeship programs, workforce development commissions, there's a lot of different organizations um that that work on some of those things, and there's always, there's a lot more to do, uh, there's always more to do. Um, and, you know, you're lucky to have some institutions in your community, and so, you know, there's some conversations and partnerships that you can have, sort of make a dent at the local level uh towards some of those things and get better alignment. Uh, but, yeah, again, like, with housing, with the housing challenges, there's only so much that you can do in your community to offset the broader challenge that that is being faced, and I don't know if if you've had a session like this on on housing.
We had to.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, um, so, you know, we're doing some work at PSRC, you know, a lot of regional analysis about where we are and where we need to be as far as capacity, seeing how much we've grown as a region, um, identifying some best practices and things that we can do at the regional and local level, but there's, it's a big, big lift, we're so far behind already, and looking out ahead to the growth that we're going to see between now and twenty fifty is is pretty big, too, so it's a pretty daunting challenge that we're facing. And at a certain point, things start to fall apart, you can't attract people to come and live here. If they can't afford a place to live, if they can't find a place to live, or the only people that can come here are coming here for a very specific type of job, at a very specific salary to be able to buy into this market. Um, and and you're missing out on skilled workers, teachers, you know, folks that are across the spectrum that that have been priced out, um, a- and don't don't have an option of of living in a place that's affordable for them and their family.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Larson, you had a comment question.
Uh, yes, it keys on a couple of the things that uh have already been mentioned. Uh. One of the largest impediments to housing cost is governmental regulation, whether it be where you can put a home or how it's built, uh, and how inspections are made and how it costs just plain more to build a home uh and makes it unaffordable for a good segment of our population, and it's not just the military. Uh, it 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 damages everybody, uh, together with the uh, uh, and I think a good example is this uh regulation that says uh, a child can't be an apprentice or enter into an apprentice program in a construction trade or any of the of the other trades until they reach uh the age of eighteen. And that just doesn't mix, because there are a lot of, and and we had this in when we had vocational schools in Coral Park uh years ago, uh, we had uh students in high schools learning um uh aircraft construction and and engineering and all kinds of things that uh that we don't have now, and that there seem to be regulations against. And uh, is there anything in the PSRC's guidelines that deal with uh the lessening of government's impact on the worsening of the costs uh that are being generated?
Had two pieces, two pieces to that, there is, you know, we staff an economic development board at PSRC, so we frequently will have conversations with our, we have board members that are from, um, you know, WDCs that and others that come and talk about the education pipeline and the programs that are available. I haven't heard a lot about the specific thing that you're, you're you're referencing, which is the inability of somebody under eighteen to be able to be in in a, in an apprenticeship program. Um, that's something I want to explore more, any of our policy boards and PSRC as a whole does have the ability to make statements about policy recommendations, sort of advocating for um, policy changes specifically or more broadly. There, a- as you can imagine, it ends up being somewhat limited, given the breadth of our regional organizations and the various opinions that are at the table, so we can oftentimes talk about things in broad terms and make broad recommendations, it gets much more difficult um to make more specific ones. So, um, we, like anybody, has the ability to convene and advocate and, you know, make statements, we had a uh recently a a legislative agenda that the PSRC's executive board adopted, again, kind of like hot, some high-level things. Um, not to the degree that that you're talking about, though it is po- it is certainly possible, I think just getting, you know, getting all the folks at the table at PSRC to come together around specific things is right, is the, is the biggest challenge for advocating to the degree I think that you're referencing.
Uh, Mr. Parsons?
Yeah, it was great to see, thanks for the presentation, uh, very helpful to go through that. I think one of the things that was mentioned in there was really supporting businesses and, you know, some of the hurdles that they have to go over to keep businesses in the community and to pay living wage jobs. Is there anything as a commission we should be considering um to help with those hurdles or or have in the back of our minds when we're considering these items that you'd recommend?
Yeah, and 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 I went through in the, in the element guide covers a a bunch of things, you know, we'll take commercial displacement um a- as sort of one example. You know, i- if that's a challenge, being able to dig into that a little more and and figure out kind of why that challenge is there in your community and how to deal with it, and not every community is going to be experiencing that. It's, you know, do you have areas that that are being redeveloped, that have been zoned for upzoning, that are going from low to high density, and you're kind of that are going from low to high density and you're kind of losing out on a lot of spaces? And then you're seeing a drain of businesses because of that? That might be a challenge that you're facing, it might not be, right? So there's sort of a breadth of potential options that your businesses, challenges that your businesses are facing or potential businesses, businesses that aren't in your community that you would like to be in there or businesses that were in your community and, and are no longer there. And so I, the first step for me would be like, is there, you know, what data can we get? What information can we get? Are there business surveys that you're doing to help inform that? Is there, is there outreach to the local business organizations, you know, local chambers to help identify more specifically what the businesses in your community, what they're facing? And then cater your policy development to help offset those. And those also involve conversations about, okay, what are our options? What kind of investments do we want to make? You know, is it changing our regulatory structure, changing our permitting? Is it making investments in, you know, streetscapes or communities to help, you know, support some areas? Or is it, you know, tweaking our, our zoning, you know? Upzoning in certain areas is really causing a lot of loss of small and local businesses. If that's the case, then, you know, maybe, you know, having that inform some tweaks and modifications about, you know, where your zoning changes may be. I think it's the start of a, you know, getting, getting that data and that information is where, you know, you all might, you're, you're in a better position than I am to kind of know what's going on. But as part of this process of being able to get more data and information as well to help figure out where you need to start making some of those tweaks.
Great, thank you so much. Any other questions at this time, seeing or hearing none? At this time, we thanks again, Jason, for your presentation, very informative. And I'm sure Ms. Tiffany, his presentation will be
Yes.
to us. Okay, good.
I'll just need to get it from him and then I'll forward it along.
Yeah, great, thank you. So we can look at those links and further in the discussion moving forward. So we, again, thank you for all your work and assistance. And we look forward to getting our project up and running and, and getting it completed and submitting it to you for further approval. And so again, thank you so much.
Thanks for having me. Have a great night.
Yep, you as well. Okay, now we move to the second part of this same topic.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and tonight we have our Economic Development Manager Becky Newton here to, to describe what's in our own comprehensive plan right now and where she's seeing the need for maybe some updates and seeking some information from you as well. So turning it over to Ms. Newton.
Good, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Beer. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. Good to be with you tonight. Some of this is a little bit parallel to what Jason had been describing to you this evening. PSRC Vision 2050 requires that all jurisdictions update or adopt the economic development element as a part of their comp plan. The city last updated our element in 2015. Each city does play an important role within the region. And we're all interconnected with regard to the decisions made on land use, transportation, public services, housing, environment, health, and so forth, as Jason had touched on. This helps us to all meet our goals of the region, both for the region for growth as well as diversity and sustainability for the community and the region. Lakewood is considered a metropolitan city. We have a, with a population of over 50,000 persons. And so we have an important role in serving as economic and cultural hubs as well as regional and manufacturing in industrial centers with global connections and living wage jobs, particularly with regard to our position here in the region. Pierce County, as you know, is the most trade dependent county within the state. And so it's very important for us to work with our partners on that piece and, and Port of Tacoma as well, importing and exporting. The city's downtown is a regional growth center. So we do anticipate a considerable amount of growth to occur, both residential and commercial in the downtown. The element does help us to guide the city in meeting our changing needs and preparing for the future. The element helps us to identify the gaps in service that we have also as well as ra- racial disparity and the opportunities that exist for Lakewood within the region. And also to understand the local economy and create our vision and goals. It explains the relationship as well between planning and economic development. So what should we include in the element? Of course, the maps and data to support the element and the direction for city. All of that will be updated as a part of the update of the element. The summary of the local economy, so everything to do with the economy, population and growth, employment, industry sectors, jobs, workforce, top employers, educational attainment, income and poverty, jobs and housing ratio, commute patterns, et cetera. We look at our strengths and weaknesses as well as opportunities and threats. We look at opportunity mapping. So what, what are our great opportunities here in the city of Lakewood? Such as the Port of Tacoma, as mentioned, Joint Base Lewis McCord. One example locally here, Lakewood is a net importer of workers. However, we still have 20,000 people that leave Lakewood to go elsewhere for jobs. So there's an opportunity for businesses to locate here in Lakewood, hopefully primary, as well as service industry businesses that will serve our community. Policies and programs to foster, foster local economic development and growth. Updates from 2040 to the 2050 plan for PSRC did include a focus on recruitment and retention of local women owned and minority owned businesses, expansion of access to, of opportunities for all and promoting environmental and socially responsible business practices. Of course, climate change is going to be a big part of, for consideration as well as improved health outcomes and recognizing the cultural and ethnically diverse community that we are and how we fit into the region. And then consideration of the institutions and tribes that we also are in partnership with. So the PSRC Regional Economic Strategy does focus on three goals, which I believe Jason did touch on, economic opportunities for everyone, global competitiveness, and also sustaining a high quality of life. Public participation, so we, we do do a lot, lot of public participation in order to complete and update the element of, through key stakeholders such as the port, industry reps, workforce, colleges, nonprofits, and the community as a whole, small business owners as well. And we can pull from our subarea planning, economic indicators that we produce as well as our community and economic development reports permitting and our subarea, area planning that we've done. And then regional alignment is a key element that we, we look at with an eye on the key industry clusters here in the region, which are aerospace, IT, maritime, military, life sciences and global health, tourism, transportation and logistics, and business services. So aligning with the growth management and all the planning policies, local as well as regional is going to be very important. We do have a pretty robust BRE program, so focusing on business retention and expansion, also mentioned by Jason, and creating those living wage jobs, focusing on our diverse culture and businesses that exist here. And establishing and looking at what are those emerging industry clusters that are coming forward into the future? And also structuring, structuring policies to prepare the community to accommodate those businesses. So just briefly, at a high level, in your package, you do have a list of the current goals. So I'm just going to kind of go through the, the higher level with you. The first goal, strengthening Lakewood's and the region's economy by supporting existing businesses and by attracting new uses and businesses. And so some of the accomplishments that we have, have experienced is improved permitting, comprehensive BRE program that we continue to expand upon. We have outpaced the county in business and job growth over the last several years. Partnerships on government contracting workshops and finding other streams of income that we can introduce businesses to and help them to, to be knowledgeable about and have opportunities to explore. And then also council programs and policies to reduce tax implications and barriers to doing business here locally. The next goal, concentrate commercial development within appropriate commercial areas and clarify different types of commercial lands. So of course, our subarea planning and updating zoning code, our code is very specific to appropriate uses, but also with our form based code in the downtown. And it, as an example, makes it a little more flexible to allow uses and adapt to our changing market going forward. The next goal, promote within commercial districts and corridors, the infill of vacant lands, redevelopment of underutilized sites and intensification of existing sites. So we do do a lot of media, social media. We have our Build Your Better Here campaign that we are continuing on, which had started as a perception campaign and, and kind of growing into different aspects. And we have an ability to expand that as well. Direct contact, emails and contacts for specific uses in businesses that we're trying to attract here in Lakewood to fill those gaps and to fill the needs within the, the region. And also partnering with the Economic Development Board and other partners, brokers, and all those that we work with on developing lands here in Lakewood. Next goal, promote a healthier business investment climate by considering methods of addressing, addressing and reducing the deteriorating parts of the commercial landscape. So as you know, we have a pretty robust abatement program. And some of those older dilapidated buildings, commercial, both commercial and residential are beginning to be removed from Lakewood to make room for new, new product in the market in, in our community, nuisance abatement. Also looking at enhancing landscaping and requirements to do so and reaching out to those who are working hard to help us beautify Lakewood to make sure that they're recognized and appreciated for what they're doing. Building codes require minimum standards. So we do look closely at the buildings as much as we can to ensure that health and safety of the businesses and those patrons of the businesses. The next goal I'll touch on is encourage industrial development and redevelopment to strengthen the economy through retention and recruitment of new complementary uses. So we've had over 2 million square feet of industrial development in the last few years. We are focusing on attraction of not only the living wage job as was, was mentioned, but higher wage jobs in some of the technical areas, advanced manufacturing. What are those types of businesses and emerging clusters that can provide jobs in the trades as well as opportunities for business expansion in the future? Working with partners to fill those gaps and in, in our economic ecosystem. The next goal I'll touch on is promoted environmentally, environmentally responsible industrial development and redevelopment and operations. So we do promote low impact development, addressing climate change. As you all know, we have a new climate change chapter that Lakewood has adopted and requirements for trees and landscaping, et cetera. Next goal, facilitate development of Woodbrook. So that kind of goes without saying, there's been quite a bit of development out there. And so that is a huge development area with more to come in the future. And so how do we not only look at those areas for industrial and manufacturing, but where are the gaps and what, what do we need to support those businesses, other vendors and, and businesses, you know? And working in partnership region wide is very helpful. We're very collaborative here in Pierce County, working with the other jurisdictions so that we're all working together as a whole to ensure that the region is, is moving forward in a good manner and providing for future jobs as well as decreasing poverty and addressing the diversity of our culture. And then, and then forethought in rezoning a portion, forethought in rezoning the Woodbrook area many years ago in collaboration with the Port of Tacoma has been, been very beneficial. So those types of planning efforts going forward will be important too and looking to the future and, and what, what will be in those emerging businesses. Next, maintain a strong proactive position toward economic development that promotes a positive civic image. So we do have a draft economic development strategy. We do have subareas that are planned. We do a lot of outreach and promotion. Economic development in Lakewood is consider the tip of the spear and kind of a guiding force for the future of Lakewood. And then utilizing our, our external ways of promoting that through media, social and partnerships and website will be important. Next, ensure responsive and efficient business licensing and building permitting process. So we are now utilizing the state system for business licensing. We have a dedicated permit team that works closely to ensure that we have efficient permitting and we're continually improving upon that as we go forward. And then in the downtown, in particular, conversion, conversion and upgrades. So we're working with private owners and investors to make projects work within the downtown and being flexible and open because, you know, as a government, we don't, we're not developers. So we need to be open and respective and willing to learn and, and know how we can work well with them. Next, promoting revitalization of specific target areas within Lakewood. Downtown is very high priority, South Chocomway, Pack Highway, Spring Brook, Telecombe, Woodbrook, the station district, and also Lake City. We haven't done a lot of work out there, but we're starting to look at how we can improve that business district, not only for the residents, but those that come and visit American Lake Park and, and attract more folks to come into that area. Next, and final, the ensure the logistical functions of Lakewood's industrial districts are not impacted by conflicts with other transportation system users. So that's key as well. One example is the Lakewood Industrial Park and its proximity to rail and movement and trucks in and out of the park. So working to coordinate with, with those users is going to be important going forward. So updated for the 2024 periodic review. This will include all of what I've described and mentioned to date. So we'll be looking at the data, updating that data to what we foresee our targets to be and goals for the next 10 years essentially. And this will include work with our key stakeholders and then putting together intentional policies that meet the needs of the region and our community. So those conclude my remarks. Any comments or questions?
Thank you. Mr. Wegeman?
I do, you, I think you threw out the number 20,000 people leave our community, go to work other places. And so then, you know, I look at, you know, with the planning commission, we're looking at buildable land. Where do we put buildings? So you did mention some things that down in Woodbrook, we have spaces, but we don't have a lot of places to put a brick and mortar, which is if you're gonna do manufacturing jobs, that's from my perspective is a prerequisite. So what what other kinds of jobs would there be if we don't do manufacturing to keep people to work here? What have you thought through some of those things?
Well, we, you know, manufacturing and industrial jobs are, you know, what kind of the market is driving right now and a lot of industrial importing, exporting. So that is one, advanced manufacturing. So if you're asking about other than manufacturing, business services. So what are the, we're also looking at, you know, what are those new startup jobs? What are those emerging industries and clusters that are starting to come to fruition? So business services as well as professional services are those that are more higher wage jobs and that also entrepreneurial. You know, there's a lot of online activity and people creating their own jobs, so creating their own economies. So some of that we're looking at. So and then with the technical, one of the things that we're thinking about is while some of the logistic jobs, you look at the the companies that are coming in, they might might not seem to have a lot of jobs, but there are also folks working in a technical capacity that support those logistic jobs. So what are those technical needs? So robotics, et cetera.
So I I mean, so Tacoma tried some things in that area. They put in the the an internet, you know, click network and some of those kind of things because that would certainly support technical people, supporting people anywhere. Have we given some consideration of doing something on that line?
We certainly can. We certainly can.
You can. We haven't done that yet.
No, we have not specifically. There's been some talk about that. And then also is there an opportunity for us to create maybe some incubator or maker space, if you will, to help those new emerging emerging businesses kind of get off the ground? There's been some talk and some need in our in our region for commercial kitchens. So that's manufacturing also. However, that's another opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Coombs.
I had a chance to meet with you years ago, Becky. You probably don't remember, but you were great to work with. And so I feel like anyone who walks in the door and gets you is gonna have a great resource. How do we reach the people that aren't walking into the door to get you? You know what I mean? And so I and I guess I I think about, and I I'm curious what you think are the greatest opportunities in our city? You know, for how do we get someone to come in? Let let me back up. Wh-what comes first, the business or the space? And very rarely does the empty building start. So you kind of need some level of commitment, but you need a building. And so without a building, nothing happens. So you kind of need those developers, which you indicated before, to come in and and help kind of get things get things going and you need those businesses. So where do we put, if someone were to come in today and want a new business in here, where would they go? I know I ran into that obstacle many years ago and I I didn't have, there wasn't a new place that I felt was was a first-class building. And so I I didn't. And so I I guess I was kind of curious. Now, where are the opportunities today? And if they're not here to the degree you think they should be, where do you think those opportunities are? And and bottom line, what I'm trying to get to is, we, I want to help. How can how can we as the planning commission help you continue to, you know, move that vision forward that you discussed? And all these goals are terrific and I I want us to be a resource for the city better. And so I know you can help diagnose the problem and we want to try and help be part of the solution.
So I think there was a few questions in there.
And let me add, no, I'm just kidding.
Okay, so I think the first thing you mentioned access, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it and that you've had a good experience. Access to me, I'm pretty accessible, phone, email, et cetera. I'm pretty responsive, I think, hopefully. And so is all of our staff, you know, Tiffany, you know, and our all of our planning staff are permitting. So that's one of our focuses to really be accessible and be able to work with it. And in fact, also our director, Debbie R, is pretty accessible to work with. Where I think opportunities are, a lot of opportunities in the technical realm. Joint Base Lewis McCord, so as an example, there is an opportunity for specialized healthcare. So addressing, you know, post-traumatic stress syndrome, brain injuries, things like that. So we've had some conversations with that. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to partner with JBLM as an example to, you know, do all across the board. And also government contracting, you know, businesses, there's still a lot of money to be had for government contracting, so continuing that and making sure that businesses are aware of that opportunity. It's not for everybody, but the the government, the Department of Defense buys everything, literally. So there there is opportunity for that. And the Port of Tacoma importing exporting of of a product. So those entrepreneurs that are doing online businesses, those are opportunities as well. We would like to and support, or at least I would, more manufacturing. So is there, are there ways for us to make it more feasible to manufacture here, particularly in Pierce, the Pierce County area? Are there ways for us to incentivize that particular? So as Jason mentioned, you know, primary business really brings in more to the economy. So if you can sell outside the area, that brings more money into the economy here. So the more you can sell out of the region, out of the state, even internationally, that brings more money into the economy. So and that's all kinds of services, products. If you can make it here, great. Not necessarily make it here, but maybe you can bring in some products. Into the port, all of Lakewood is a foreign trade zone. And so that's an opportunity for business startups to bring in components, assemble it here and then ship it out. So those are some ideas.
Great. Any other question? Yes, Mr.?
This is probably similar to this question, but, you know, as you're talking to potential businesses and businesses that don't come into our community, what were some of the obstacles that stopped them from coming in? And more specifically, ones that we should be thinking about as planning commission that we could help with?
So I think space is a big one. So a lot of folks want to be here and Lakewood, you know, is is a good place to do business in terms of the cost of doing business. So space, I think, and then looking at, maybe if there's, you know, we we want to do a little more research on what other incentives are possible. So what what are businesses looking for that they're not finding? So in in addition to space, the competition in finding space. Also, if there are a lot of home-based businesses as well doing business here in Lakewood, probably 1,100 businesses that are home-based. And so are there incentives that we can offer businesses that are doing business at home as well? So thinking about that, hopefully that helps.
Transportation was one of the other obstacles in some instances in the past.
Yes.
You know, that you just might not have suit them for logistics-wise, moving pieces, products, personnel, whatever. That in between, you know, Olympia and in Fife, that corridor gets a little crowded. So that was, you know, in the past, I've heard that was some obstacles as well.
Yeah, I recall that I went many years ago, I listened to Boeing executives say that that their biggest issue to retention is transportation. Yeah. And and so that that was was one of the, one of the issues, definitely.
Great. And myself, I've had great experience with Becky over the years.
Thank you.
She's she does well. It's always great to sit down and and just, you know, brainstorm with her. She has some great ideas and some businesses. But they they do, that department, you know, marketing-wise, you know, you made commercials and sent it out, they're on the radio ads, you know, where they, you know, come not only live, but build and businesses where we're always open or, you know, our open signs 24/7, 365. And so it's been very good. Sometimes I ask myself, what's the, what's the reason Lakewood isn't having some of these places? University Place, Proctor, you see, you know, some huge expansions of housing, small businesses moving in in those communities. Why, why is the process a lot slower in Lakewood than our surrounding neighbors? That's the, that's the question that I get from outside, you know, community members. And my thought as well is, why, why there? We got more, you know, we do have some space, especially our downtown. Why, why aren't they coming here? And why aren't the developers building and having all those services? Like you talked about, medical services doesn't mean a new hospital. It just means the services to prevent a lot of people having to go to the hospital. They can get those services done at, you know, eye type of surgery, you know, locally instead of going to the hospital or imaging or those type of things. Why can those services not be available in the lower part and maybe housing above? And so all of those things is what I keep thinking and seeing in those new developments in Proctor, University Place, you know, all over Kent, you know, that whole Kent Station down there. So that's what I look and and say, hey, somehow, how we attract that kind of stuff?
Yeah. So just a couple of comments on that. So it's, it was, part of it was perception for a while. And we've been changing that over time. We are working on some projects here in the town center, similar to what you've described. It's it's taken us a while to get there, but I think we will get there. And it's a high priority for a city council as well. One of the other thing, just for people to come in, as we build our downtown, we need more things for people to do, experiences. You know, like we have Catapult that just opened not too long ago. So other other things that will pull people in to the the town center. It's, no, town center is for our community, but it's also for others to come in and enjoy. So having those different activities for families will be important. Also poverty, median income. So some people look at that and say, well, you know, it's not the best community. So some of the perceptions we're trying to change over time. Those those things have been an issue in the past. And, you know, land costs, costs in Lakewood are relatively, well, they're getting higher over time, but a little bit less expensive overall. But if we can just continue to build on that and and change those perception perceptions for folks and make sure that we're engaging, we are doing that more, engaging with more developers, high-quality developers, ensuring that we expect a higher quality development in our community. Those types of things I think will be important.
Good. Mr. Coombs?
How do you do that, that last part?
Talk, just relationships and continuing to talk to developers, reaching out to those developers, getting those conversations going, getting RFPs on the street. So Lakewood Landing did bring in a lot of developers for conversations. It ultimately didn't, the phase one is not what we thought it would be envisioned as. However, it did bring a lot of conversations, a lot of people from out of state, even internationally, to look at Lakewood. Continuing to promote our Build Your Better Here campaign, nearcation for tourism, being more proactive on social media, particularly if you're looking for business LinkedIn and reaching out to specific developers. And then just developing those relationships and and creating or casting a wider net, if you will, and working with our partners on, you know, who are those developers that we wish to attract to our community.
Great. Well, thank you again. We appreciate your.
I have a question, Mr.?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Estrada, go right ahead.
Hi, Becky. Thanks very much for the presentation. Your goals are really interesting. Can you elaborate a little bit more on goal EB514? What's this approach for land assembly? And can you also give us a successful example?
Consider.
Is that EB514?
Right.
A local development government corporation and equity investment approach for land assembly within a designated target area. Under this model, landowners contribute to their land and improvements as shares to the corporation and receive a portion of the distribution from cash flow generated by redevelopment. So that's something I'm not really, haven't really worked in, but there is an opportunity to create a corporation or a partnership where you can buy into it and create an investment where that creates cash flow for the investors. I don't know that we have an example to share with you this evening, but it's something that we're exploring.
It must come from another entity, I would, I would think, someone who's actually done this successfully. Okay, I'll follow up on my own later. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. I'm seeing or hearing no other questions at this time then again. Oh, Ms.
Mr. Larson.
Mr. Larson? Hand way up here. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Larson. Unmute yourself.
Bob, I can comment on that a little bit, that EB5 program. Very, very complicated federal government program. They worked on putting a system through it in, putting it through a system in the city of Tacoma and basically folded their tent and went away because it was so complicated to administer. And and actually create a program that that fit. And I was involved in the land sale to convert nine units of single-family residential in 1880 Victorian-type homes to to put a new project in their place. And it was a great project. And in fact, they built it with other money. But the EB5 thing totally fell apart. So I don't see St. Lakewood doing anything with that clause soon and be happy to talk to you about it more later.
Great. Thanks, Lynn. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you are talking specifically about EB5, is that what you're mentioning, Lynn? EB5 program? Yes. So the city did have an EB5 center, but there was really no investment at the time. The the developer took all the money and went to Southern California. So but there is, there is a EB5 regional, a small center within Woodbrook that a developer has put in place, so that does exist.
Didn't know that.
As he mentioned, it is very difficult, it's a very difficult program to manage. As he mentioned, it is very difficult, it's a very difficult program to manage.
I didn't read, I didn't read the goal as EB5 at all.
I didn't either.
Yeah, it looked to me, I read that as a joint venture corporation, a private public development. And, and Robert, I can talk with you about some of those because I have worked on some of those up north.
We are hoping to, within the downtown, to do that just because it's going to take a lot of partners in order to do some of those large mixed use projects.
Great. Thank you again, all fellow commissioners. Becky, as always, thank you again. And welcome you anytime that you want to share some more information. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have any reports, additional reports from the staff?
Nothing else from staff.
How about Mr. Aboki? Anything from us, from the city council side?
Thank you, Chair Daniels, Paul Boki, City Council. So as was mentioned, the, the council is actually, I think on next Monday night at our study session, we'll be discussing our committee assignments. That includes outside committee assignments. Of course, Councilmember Farmer is now auditor farmer. And so we're at six people right now. And she was also on some, some pretty important committees outside of the city. The, the big one being the SHAPE, the South Sound Housing Accessibility Partnership. And, and so we're going to have that discussion and there may be some movement on that as to who's going to be in those positions. And that's a big one because that's a, a really a lot about housing policy and where, where things are going to land and, and, and how things are going to go forward on, on housing and where those things will end up. The open position, by the way, I believe is, we're taking applications until Friday, January 13th. It's possible, and, and I guess it's okay to talk about it's possible because of our, of our issues that we, that Ms. Spear mentioned earlier, that we could have extend that deadline a little bit. But I don't want to guarantee that we're going to do that, but there was some discussion last night that we may have to do that just because we're hard up against the holidays anyway. Or, and so it's, it's kind of a tough time anyway. And then we have this situation which, you know, I still don't have my computer. So I mean, I, I, I'm really kind of flying blind on a lot of stuff now too. So I don't, I don't know those kind of expectations that we, we can expect. Thank you for working on this economic development chapter, a very important chapter, clearly to the city of Lakewood of all the elements. Of course, housing is always a big one, but the economic development one has been an essential one for the city of Lakewood for a long, long time. They are correct in mentioning that, but the, the staff is correct in mentioning that it's very important to the city council. The policy of the council really probably hasn't changed much since the beginning of cityhood. Probably when it comes to economic development, it's probably changed the least from the standpoint of we're in support of it, we're in support of more jobs. We have available or have available property, although a lot of property is, is, I don't know that any of us expected. Everyone was waiting for that day that Woodbrook would start to redevelop. And, and then there was, I think, the moving company moved on 150th there. And then it was there alone for a while. And then the last 10 years have hit. Nobody, I don't think, expected that logistics would become that big of a deal. I don't know that we can expect that for the next 10 years it'll be like that. We do have available property. But assembly will still be an issue, right? Because there's, there's areas in the air corridor that are, I believe, underlying zoning is industrial, but there are a lot of small parcels and there's folks living there. So there'll be challenges going forward. Beyond that, we're just, just getting started. Last night was kind of a breezy night with a lot of, of, of different proclamations and whatnot. So we'll, we'll kind of get into the big work late as the year goes on.
Good. I do have one thing that on our, in the last meeting of December or whatever, I know, speaking for the fellow commissioners, one thing that we did suggest or ask is after the planning commission makes recommendations to the council, the council takes action. We, we see the action by looking at the council, you know, meetings and testimonies and all that. And I think what we requested is if we could get a summary of the action of the council versus the recommendation to the planning commission. Is there something that we might have missed or looked, didn't look enough into? Or those type of things would be helpful moving forward.
Okay.
And specifically, you know, I think this really spearheaded by the tree preservation code, the drastic differences between the planning commission recommendation from the city council, action of the plan was night and day as I evaluate. And I, I think I have some census of the other commissioners. And so those are things that, what, what did we miss? If we missed anything, what should we look at closer? So that if we could, maybe when our joint meeting, when we have our work plan and stuff, maybe in whoever the liaison's moving forward, that would be helpful moving forward for us.
Yeah, I, and, and we could certainly do that. And I, and I understand that, that, that sentiment. I, I would say you didn't miss anything, right? I mean, I, I, let's, let's start with that. I think that the council would agree, and I, I certainly would say, and I think the council would agree, that the planning commission did a very good job in, in taking the recommendations of the, the ad hoc advisory board and, and, and working with those recommendations. The council did make some changes. I don't know that they were major changes, but they, the, the big one being the tree canopy one. And the sense there was, and, and I do have to admit, I think I was out of the room when the discussion occurred. I went up to talk to somebody. And I believe the sense was because it's such a long-term goal that going to the 40, 40% was not something that was, was unreachable. And, and so I, I would say I was a little bit surprised by that consensus building on the council. But I, I, I do believe that, that if you look at the geography of that, that, that we're going to be hopefully planting more trees in areas right now that have very little tree cover. I mean, what the, what the, the initial report said is that the, really the east side of the city had a very low tree canopy. And, and if we're going to talk about equity and whatnot, we need, and as redevelopment occurs, we're going to have to plant more trees in those areas. And, but we're challenged by that because we don't own all the property, right? So, so when new development goes in, it'll have more trees than probably some of the older development, if there's redevelopment in the area. I'm not completely opposed to protecting certain areas that are environmentally sensitive and planting trees on them. I, I think we're going to have to have going forward some, some pretty frank, difficult discussions because they'll be costly about improving park space and areas other than Spring Brook. And so, and hopefully that will add some tree canopy. It challenges us more as a city, but I don't think that, that this committee missed anything because I think it came up very late that that's something.
Yeah, and I did see some of the specifics that I don't think the commissioners, I, I speak for myself. I didn't realize on the lot sizes, if a developer came in and bought a lot and then subdivided it, what the impact would be for is the size of the lots in the threshold. I thought it was curious of the, moving from 17,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. I'm like, where did that come from? But that was my impression. You, we had a lot more houses between the 17 and 10 that was impacted immediately on all of the permitting and all of the things that. So I like, whoa, what was that thought and process? But just, just a couple scenarios that were probably the, you know.
And that was a big one. And, and we would have to have more discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not asking you to try to respond. I just said, those are some examples of what the, kind of the blowback or the, you know, feeling that I personally had. And I'm sure I heard from various commissioners at the time that that was like, what? So no problem. Like I'm asking you to try to commit to saying anything tonight. I'm just saying, but those are some of the things that would help us, I think, moving forward on various different topics. If there is some things we should have considered or not, or just help us all. It just helps us all try to narrow down the, the best recommendations.
We can try that at the joint meeting, but I, but I would say the council needs to respect your independence.
Yeah.
I, I mean, the, the planning commission does play a role different than other advisory committees because you do meet more in a legal setting for the record. You know, other advisory committees can meet and sit around a table and, and chat up informally about stuff. You, you, you don't have that luxury, right? And so, and, and we, we want to respect that independence. So I, I understand what you're saying. I, I, I will say you're doing nothing wrong.
Yeah.
It's, it's that things get to council, there's additional citizen input, and then there's, there's council members. I will say this too also, that when big pieces of legislation move, there's always unintended consequences. And if there was any ever piece of legislation that will have unintended consequences, it's the tree retention ordinance. And good, bad, or indifferent, right? So, so advocates for more protections are going to see loopholes. And there, there are probably loopholes in there. They're going to be, that's just not working. We're just not really saving as many trees as we hope. Developers are going to say the, right? They're going to say, whoa, this thing has really, is really not working. And so these are the kind of things that we have to pick up a few years later and take, and take a look at. So, and, and there are other things, I think, coming down the pike that we're going to have to take a hard look at. And, and, and as this, and as you go into the comp plan process, you certainly, just besides some updates, I mean, this is a major update. New elements added. So we need to have some pretty tough discussions about some of the things that, how they're written and the direction we want to go.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Larson, did you have additional question?
I just wanted to, excuse me, I wanted to commend you on your diplomatic presentation. I will be more candid. I felt like we had been gone around. I felt like the proponents of the, of the tree cover felt like we were just somebody that had to be go through, but they were going to go get the real job done with the council. And I think that's what it felt like happened. And so I, I agree also with you, Councilmember Bocchi, that, that this is a long-term subject. It was dealt with by the council as something that needs to be thought about in the long term perhaps. And that's the way they created their solution to the, the loud voices at hand. I did personally get quite a bit of pushback from the development communities saying, what's going on in Lakewood? You guys want to stop, stop growth? Yeah, go, go plant a whole bunch more trees. But if you drive through Lakewood, it's really pretty nice. And, and so we'll, we'll hear more about the issue. But I do know that I, I felt that, that we were just dealt with as an incidental group by the proponents of that, that matter. And that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments from commissioners? Go ahead, Mr. Wegman.
I hear what you said, Don. And you, the, the problem is, is we looked at objective data. We looked at objective data and our recommendation didn't match up with where the city council did. And, and both groups are looking at the same data. And so it, it appears that the decision was made more on a subjective perspective than on the data. If, if you did that, that's totally fine. I mean, that's how politics works. However, when we're, when we're trying to look at data, those are some objective things. And you can look at the math and say, hey, you know, two and two equals four. So if, if you want us to look at things more in a subjective thing, then I guess we, we need some help to do that because we're, we're trying to look at the hard data and try to give a recommendation that makes sense.
Yes, Ms. Spear?
Thank you. I would just offer in response to that, you are, you are supposed to be the objective body. And then it goes to the elected level and they do what they're going to do. So I would just echo the comments that Mr. Boki made about how the council feels about the planning commission. They are confident in what you do. They appreciate what you do, but it's a different type of decision-making process that happens there. What I can commit to you too though, is that some of the things that were happening at the end of last year and into right now with all of the different big topics, we as a staff need to commit to getting you as much information as possible before you're making your decision. And so the gap sometimes that you may feel in what the council is considering before them versus what you saw, those are the things where I see we can certainly be improving and working with you on. If you're ever feeling like, is there anything else we need to know before we make our recommendation, that's, that's where we can try to help you too.
And I'd hate to believe, you know, make this thing go on, but I, I think from all my perspective there again, is the information that we got. I, I think we had so many revisions in by the presenters, the, you know, the, all the people that came to us and talked to us, the public hearing. So, and I don't know, I, I agree. Everyone needs to do better. I'm just asking for just summary so that way it can answer some questions instead of us just thinking to ourselves and our thoughts of, you know, what, how did this happen? And we can help relay that information back to the citizens that come and ask us. So they ask us, hey, wait a minute, you made this recommendation. What happened when the council got it? How come it's so different? And I'm like, jeez, if I don't know, I can't relate to the answer. To help the council in the city have a same, you know, story moving forward.
Yeah, I, I would say the council's a political process, right? And I mean, that's the major difference. So you, you need to be objective with the information that you're given, the public testimony that you're given. Some of the changes in the tree retention ordinance or, or some of the, well, some of the changes that were made. The council may be looking or thinking about different items that may occur in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
Without.
Yeah.
In anticipation of changes in regional or state level rules and regulations. So that's something you couldn't bring into your process, we could, right?
Good. No problem. I appreciate your, you know, comments and, and we won't keep you any longer. If no one has any other further questions at this time, enough of the staff. We have a next meeting, January.
January 18th.
18th.
Yes.
18th. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We'll call the meeting.
Thanks.